We have no public hearing scheduled for tonight, so we will move to the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of August 25th. Resolution recognized on September 6th through 12th, 2020, a suicide prevention week. Approval of contract for Century Engineering Incorporated, DVA NXL for Construction Engineering, services on Arthur Drive in the amount of $218,140. A five-year electrical contract with Davis H Elliott. Purchased two police vehicles at $133,334. Set personal property tax discount percentage to 34.23 for 2020 tax bills in accordance with Personal Property Tax Reform Act. We need to reschedule a public hearing originally scheduled September 22nd to October 13th on behalf of Holland Hough. Property owned by LR Birch for a tow-in service at 3295 North Franklin Street. Scheduled a public hearing on October the 27th for a rezoning request by Gay and Neil for property owned by Golden Triangle Development LLC located east of Turnus or Simmons Road. Tax map 499-1-5A, 6, 7, 8, and 9, and 390 Teal Street. West is to rezone approximately 9.56 acre property from A agriculture and R2 to two-family residential, or three multi-family residential properties. And scheduled a public hearing on a conditional use permit for the above properties.
Sir, can I, I did not hear when you, do you mention adjustment to the agenda? I missed a part.
Oh, I did not, but if you'd like to adjust the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
I would just like to discuss items about the cars, the signs, and the ordinance change separately.
Cars, okay. The ordinance on.
That was signed in.
They're separately anyway, if they're on the.
Under the discussion for the action by Mayor and Council?
Yes.
I just want to make sure we can be able to discuss them too, so.
Okay, so they're all covered, right?
Well, basically you're requesting that item E on the consent agenda be a separate item to vote on.
Yes, yes, please.
All right.
And I guess, well, go on.
Okay, so.
Well, I guess, are we moving back to the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items A, B, C, D, F, G, H, I.
No, I'll second. Put a motion in a second. Any discussion? Can you name it? Oh, I'm sorry.
I wanted to make a comment about where we are recognizing, where did I go? Okay, item B under the consent agenda. I would like to make a comment about it.
Okay.
I am so grateful that we are recognizing this, making changes and, well, we hope to make changes. And in this case, for the suicide prevention week, I just feel, and this is just personal, I think that it's a nice gesture what we're trying to do, but I guess my question is, what are we doing to help prevent suicides in our town? And I guess that is a question for all of us. And then as we sometimes are making things even worse sometimes for the people in here by checking and harassing citizens for their home appearances, grass cuttings, tree removals, increasing bills.
What has that to do with the consent agenda?
Well, it does, because we are trying to.
Suicide prevention, yeah.
What is, what is.
But what are we doing, I mean, just saying something that recognizing a week sounds great to put a signature on it and a board on it, but what are we doing to prevent suicides here in the town of Christiansburg?
What is your ideas? You've mentioned your issue, you want to prevent suicide prevention, I think that's something we all can use more of it.
I think we've done this.
What is your, what's your solution?
My suggestion would be to even provide money, allocate money, maybe kind of create a group of people that, to see if the community wants to intervene and help, like facilities like the Eagles Nest, because I know when Eagles Nest was in the Town of Christiansburg, we kind of gave them a hard time by being here. And I think instead of giving them a hard time and these organizations that want to make a change, like the boarding homes, I think we, we can't just decline them to come and move over here in the Town of Christiansburg, I think we have to have discussions about them. How can we help so people that get out of jail, the people that are having issues right now paying their bills, they can go to somebody and talk to and maybe hopefully get some financial help.
Okay, well, can you explain what the Eagles Nest is?
It's a, it's a program for people that have had encounters with drugs, or they have had a bad past, they have been in jail, they have come out of jail. It's a program that helps them and rehabilitates them.
And so they're no longer here.
They just moved to Floyd, but they're always wanting to provide the services here in the Town of Christiansburg and hopefully find a house in the future here in the Town of Christiansburg where we can serve more to those people here in the Town of Christiansburg instead of sending them to Floyd.
Right, so did we run Eagles Nest out of Christiansburg?
Not anymore, sir.
No, no.
Not from my understanding.
When they moved to Christiansburg?
They did. From my understanding, we did.
Who, from whose understanding?
From several people that I have spoken to.
Who?
I'm not going to tell you those names. I, the boarding house, you were against that.
We boarding house. The boarding house for who?
For Maury March over there on Ronoff Street.
Does Maury March have a, have a boarding house on Ronoff Street?
She's, she does.
Yes. The bill was passed.
But that was difficult to get through, wasn't it?
It wasn't difficult to get through, but that was a grandfather, we did change the ordinance after that.
So may I call for a vote on the consent agenda?
I'm just saying, just have something in mind, can we come up with things to help prevent it?
I challenge you to come up with something.
Okay.
You present council with real solutions, not issues.
Okay, sounds good.
Because that's all we get from you every week, is issue, 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 but no solutions.
Well, every time I bring those, we're still, we're still need to go back.
Sorry, Madam Crook, would you call the council?
Hold on.
No.
I think that Mr. Showalter has a good point here. Ms. Hitz, have you had a chance to look into other agencies in this area that are doing things for suicide prevention? Have you done that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you. May we now call, call the council to get a consent agenda?
Please.
That is A through D and F through I.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is 6:04. So next we will talk about the purchase contract of two police vehicles for $133,000. Is that what you'd like to, we're going to vote?
Yes, yes. We, we got all this money from the state, it's not free money, it's tax money for the CARES Act. And I'm not against us getting cars. All I'm against about the fact is, are we doing everything in our, that we can solve the issues of not having to provide, buy more cars like that? Can we just spray them with Lysol? Are we doing that? Because it seems like right here we are getting two cars that cost almost $140,000, we are billing them to the CARES Act. And I guess my concern is, we keep using the CARES Act money, and I know we got the money to be able to use it, but at the same time, is that even ethical? And I guess that's my question to you guys, is that ethical that we're doing that, we're using those funds? And instead of helping the local community, even with water bills and things like that, we're going over there and spending this money in things that we will need in the future? Because we're already getting two cars within the current budget, and then we're going to get two additional ones, is that correct? So I will make it four?
It's just two, just two additional vehicles.
So, but we're getting in our budget for 2020, 2021, there are two police cars, correct? So we will get four police cars within this year.
That'd be correct. To be honest though, we had actually been replacing four per year. It's kind of a normal replacement schedule to some degree. We were behind in police vehicles and probably still are to some degree, although I think we've caught up closer to where we should be. We kind of did that with the downturn, the recession, I think we were behind in public works, equipment, things like that. Although I think the purpose of these vehicles is really to be replacement vehicles, if, vehicles down for COVID-19. That is, the recommendation of the Health Department is that if you have a positive, that you not use the vehicle for at least 48 hours. And that, and we have had a couple of instances where we have had vehicles that we've had to shut down for, for at least 48 hours. We've done that, I think, at least twice.
And just a reminder, there are over 40, 40 police cars that we're currently on, correct?
I can't tell you the number, but the chief, chief is here.
I didn't hear that last question.
How many police cars do we currently on?
We have 36 vehicles in the fleet.
Thirty-six.
Police vehicles.
So Chief, excuse me, so the two additional vehicles that you asked me for, are they going to replace two COVID vehicles?
Two COVID vehicles?
Two older.
Two older.
They will.
Okay, and the older vehicles, how many miles are on those vehicles?
Both have over 130,000.
And how old are they?
They are 2011, so they would be nine years old.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, I believe in the past few years, you have thought out that if we slow down replacing cars, that in the long run, it's going to hurt us when we have to replace new vehicles, and we don't keep up this normal location.
I mean, I have discussed that in budget work session, that if you leave a car on the street to 150,000 miles, the maintenance begins to cost you dramatically. And it's not really, that's not really the issue here. I mean, the issue is, I mean, our municipality has been awarded $3.6 million in COVID CARES Act money. We, we are in a position where we have already deadline two vehicles because it was COVID-19 contaminated. We're put in positions where we're making transports to Virginia Beach and Petersburg for TDOs. Those two spare cars that we're using to make those transports, they're in tough shape. So the justification for these two would be to use those as our backup vehicles in case, in case of COVID-19. And at the end of the day, we have until 31 December to spend the $3.6 million, and that's not my responsibility, I know that's vows, but I'm going to venture to say that we'll never make that happen between now and 31 December. So I think from a police perspective, we're being very proactive with this submission. Other jurisdictions around us, Montgomery County, Blacksburg, Montgomery County asked for four under the CARES Act, and I think Blacksburg was asking for two. Most, all police agencies around us are asking for police vehicles under the CARES Act money.
Okay. Thank you for answering those questions. I guess the reason why I was asking, just to make sure that we are doing the right thing and we're not going to be using funds that were to help, you know, the community, which I know you guys are helping the community, please don't get me wrong. I just want to make sure that we don't get in trouble like businesses are by using money that is allocated to them by PPP money, which I know is different from the CARES Act money. I just want to make sure we don't get in trouble. Is that something that?
I think the key point is that it has to be used to address concerns that were, you know, address COVID-19 problems.
Mm-hmm.
And that's kind of what I'm understanding from Randy and from the chief, is that this is an expenditure that's necessary to address the problem. I think if that's the case, then we're legally in good standing.
And then just one last question. You said that there were two vehicles that were contaminated already. Is that a way, and I know it takes about 48 hours and then you can reuse them. I'm sure that you guys are able to use sprays, cleaning things or whatever, in every shift? Or how are you taking care of that? And I don't know if that's, can you answer that to me, just to make sure that everybody's cleaning the cars after everybody's, you know, somebody's in there?
Yeah, we're, I mean, we're following CDC guidelines on decontamination of police vehicles at the, at the end of each shift and the oncoming shift, we'll do the same. So we've been following that since the COVID-19 virus hit us in March. We've deployed a operational plan to handle that and have done that very well.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So Chief, basically it sounds like we have two old vehicles.
Correct.
With high mileage.
Correct.
And this is a good opportunity to replace them.
Yes, sir, I believe it is.
Using someone else's phones.
I believe it is, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
And I think it's fiscally responsible to do so.
Thank you, Chief.
Mark, were these two vehicles in your, in your proposed budget line, sir?
No, they were not. They are proposed, they were approved vehicles in our current budget, but these were not two of those.
But when you first proposed the budget, were they not in there?
I mean, these, these two were not. I mean, we had approved to be.
To qualify, it would have had to have not been budgeted prior to March 1st of this year. So if it wasn't included in a, in this year's budget at that time, then it would be a possible, as long as it's addressing COVID-19.
Well, this gives us some breathing room for the next year's budget.
Possibly, yes, sir.
Okay, would that be, I'm just going to put it on table, we can keep the discussion going, but I made a motion that we approved item E of the consent agenda, the purchase contract of two vehicles for $133,334, 48, for, and Chief, for.
Motion in a second. I'll make a quick comment. I had some questions about this, and we saw that after speaking with, I spoke with Mr. Bishop about this, and also with the town manager, Winfield. And my questions are satisfied, I was just questioning the cost of those, and that is sort of what you would call out-the-door cost, they're typical police interceptors. Move in ready. And move in ready, and especially with the risk that our officers are taking. We already have COVID, you know, we've had COVID in our police department, I'm sure a lot of places have, so my questions were satisfied, I had the same questions, Ms. Hicks, and my questions are satisfied after this conversation, so I'm happy to support. Motion in a second. Any other discussion? Madam Ford?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Under introductions and presentations, we have Children's Trust Board Director, member of court, Hall, and Police Lieutenant Randy Bonds, representative of the Children's Trust and New River Valley Advocacy Center of the NRV.
Mayor, members of council, thank you so much for providing us an opportunity to be here briefly and to update you as to what's going on with regard to the CAC and Children's Trust. I don't think Lieutenant Bonds and myself are here to tell you about horror stories in regards to child abuse. I think it's very difficult to hear as an adult, I don't like to hear those things that we deal with. That being said, it does put things in perspective when you, I guess you realize that the children that go through those types of ordeals, what they experience during the actual, during the actual encounter itself. And that's precisely, you know, why we're here. The CAC is the Child Advocacy Center. And what the CAC is, it's actually located just right down the street here. It is an area in which there is a forensic interviewer in a comfortable and safe area for a child to be forensically interviewed. And what that means is, it's a trained interviewer who does not lead the child, it's a trained interviewer who does not create any, if you will, assumptions with the child, lets the child really direct things. And at that time, the child that's giving that interview, the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office, members of the Police Department, can be present. And what we do is, we have one event, we have one opportunity at that point for that child to tell their story. And these will be child sexual abuse stories, this will be child physical abuse stories, or child mental abuse stories. So it's pretty much the entire spectrum of child abuse that we see unfortunately in our community and in our society. The key there is the child is not having to tell their story to a CPS worker, an additional detective, an additional guardian at light, an additional attorney, having to be deposed, speaking and to another, to maybe to a member of the Commonwealth. And what you do is, you get multiple stories and multiple retellings, and unfortunately, recollections are imperfect as they are, that can sometimes frustrate the inevitable efficient prosecutions on those matters. So the CAC is vitally important in that regard. And then of course, the byproduct to that is less re-traumatization of our children. I can't imagine anything worse than having to retell a story of when a child had been sexually abused or physically abused. So the CAC is here locally, it's in our community, it's in our backyard, quite frankly, and it's growing. And we're actually, I guess, double the size for the last time I was there as to the most recent time that I went there. And we are having an open house. And that open house is scheduled for the 25th of September, which is, I think it's two Fridays from this Friday, from 9:00 to 6:00. No appointment necessary. We would frankly cordially invite any and all people that are here today, council members, the mayor's, members of the town administration. You can stop by for five or 10 minutes. And the key is just to meet the interviewers and to kind of see where it is that our children are taken, and where they can again tell their stories in a very non-combative, if you will, environment. These are also recorded, and so that if an additional individual needs to look at that interview or review that interview, they can do so by that recordation that's provided. And multiple times, many, many times, I would say the gross majority of times, it creates the, if you will, or lack of necessity for that child to ultimately testify in court. I mean, the key for the CAC is you do an assessment from the very get-go, and that kind of leads you as to where things are going to go and where they're going to progress. I was somewhat unfamiliar with Children's Trust years ago. I don't mean to say when I was a member of council, but quite frankly, when I was a member of council, we heard about CAC. I believe that it was Mr. Bonds and it was Melissa Almond, who was a CPS, I think she's CPS supervisor from Radford City, came and spoke to us about it. Now, I was really familiar with the CAC, I just never knew it fell under that umbrella. So I knew of the importance. And I knew as a GAL, I would oftentimes get those transcripts, and I would use those in court when I would be charged with representing a child's interest in regards to a criminal misconduct, or even with a civil case that may flow from that. But one thing that this council did, there's many things we did that I'm very proud of, but one thing I'm very proud of is that we jumped on board and we heard that telling, if you will, of the need, and we funded it as a council. And you all still fund it, you've been funding it every year. What it is, and I will, I don't mean to steal Randy's thunder, because this is his word, but we were the first domino. And when we funded it, and it's a five oh one see-through, when we funded it, next thing you know, Montgomery County jumped on board, then Blacksburg jumped on board, then Floyd jumped on board, then Radford City jumped on board. The next thing you know, we're getting so many calls, because quite frankly, one thing that Christiansburg is very, if you, I would call it famous for, known for, is our crimes against children, the way we are able to mobilize. I know a lot of localities come to us for support in that regard, we don't take that lightly. But we funded it, and those other localities fell in bore, fell in place. Now we're taking them from as far away as Grayson County, Carroll County, and there's a second interviewer that we have to have that's now on board, and that's the reason for the expansion. I hate to say it, it's kind of one of those where it's expanded and it's wonderful to have that facility and that capability, but it's a shame that we have to have that wonderful facility and that capability and two forensic interviewers. But regardless, it is a godsend, and I can tell you that from a personal perspective. But Mr. Bonds has more information to share from law enforcement perspective, some of the numbers and things, but cordially, I invite you to stop by, if you've got a minute of your time or five minutes, call me up if you want to, and I'll meet you over there. But just come in and meet them. Frankly, I wouldn't say shake their hand, but perhaps tap their elbow now, because what they listen to on a daily basis, you couldn't pay me for, I couldn't do it. I couldn't do it. So I'm very blessed that we have people like Randy Bonds and other members of our law enforcement in the community, forensic interviewers, forensic staff, nurses, all of them that can do that. At this point, I'll turn it over to Randy Bonds.
Ladies and gentlemen, council, I thank you for giving us time to talk to you tonight. My name is Randy Bonds, I'm lieutenant here at Christiansburg PD for the Investigations Division. And like Court said, we do take child abuse and these allegations extremely seriously. We look into them quickly, and we really have jumped on board with the CAC in 2012 when Children's Trust took it over. We were using them sporadically before then, but we use them primarily now. And over the course of these last eight years that I've seen, I've been supervisor of the Investigations Division, and we've interviewed numerous, numerous children there, and we've made a lot of criminal charges off of that. And based off of those criminal charges, you would expect for the kids to have to testify, but these interviews are so strong and so good, that we've had one child that in the last eight years, I can remember all the charges we've made, have to testify in court. And that's huge, because can you imagine being a six or seven-year-old kid, having to go before court, and having a defense attorney get into you? It's been very, very successful, and I really am here heartfelt telling you as our council for Christiansburg that I appreciate everything that you've done, and I'll really hope that you continue to support the CAC. There are two things, me as a criminal investigator, I need now that I've been in this for a long time, and that is Child Advocacy Center and the Forensic Nurse Program at Carillion. And unfortunately, I control neither one of those fundings, and I control neither one of them, whether they can come or go. So the council, I would ask you all, if you ever have a chance to, to go see the CAC on September 25th, that you come out and see what this is all about. And if you ever have a chance to go talk to the forensic nurses and do anything with Carillion, I would implore you to do that as well. I'll set it up if you want to talk to them or see what kind of facilities they have. I'm not here to talk about forensic nurses, but those are two things that I really have to have from a criminal perspective here. But I want to talk to you about the cases we've made over the last few years. We do see a down slide right now. In 2018 to 2019, we had 86 cases in Montgomery County, 36 of those were from Christiansburg. A total of kids were interviewed by the New River Valley Children's Advocacy Center, were 206 kids in a year. This year, from 2019 to 2020, we've seen 53 in Montgomery County with 16 in Christiansburg, with 140 total. That has to be because of COVID, in my opinion, the kids getting out of school in March and not going back, they haven't had eyes on them. We really expect to see a big uptick coming on now since school started today, now that they're going to be back in front of counselors and teachers, we really expect to see, we've prepared and braced ourselves for that. So unfortunately, we've had to expand. I'm grateful that people like you all have allowed us to expand. I'm very appreciative from not only a Children's Trust Board Member, but from one of your employees. I really do thank you for that, and I hope that we can continue on with that. Again, not all the time, is it worth our while? I don't say worth our while, but not, is it not good for the child for us to pursue criminal charges? Some kids just aren't going to be able to handle it if we have to go to court, and I always have to look at that. So we also have, our family advocates provide a lot of care for the family, we get them counseling services. It's predicted or estimated that each family will receive about a thousand, I think it's $1,038 worth of services for each time they come to the CAC. So if I can't prosecute for them, at least we know we have something out there for that child to help them and their family, the non-offending caregiver, to help them through and get them back on track so they can have a better life. And that's really what we're here for. It used to be that if I didn't press charges or we didn't pursue charges from a criminal standpoint, I really didn't see the child anymore, and it's kind of, from our perspective, it was kind of they're on their own, if you will. I don't mean to sound cold like that, but I really couldn't go any further with criminal charges. But now that we're part of this team, we all work together, and we really make sure the families are doing well, even if I can't be my spoke to the wheel and present criminal charges to the town attorney, or they don't pursue charges for whatever reason, we know that that child's being taken care of. So again, I thank you from the bottom of my heart, from an employee perspective and from a board member perspective. Thank you.
I believe you all have about a 95% approval from the families of the children involved?
It was something, it was something very, very high, the way they felt afterwards versus the way they felt, and it used to just be us and CPS going out, talking to the kid, talking to the family, and if we could get charges or we could help them then, but realistically, we were done in two to three months and there was all family again. Now, we're a year, a year and a half still keeping contact with this family to make sure they're still on track. And that is huge to try to break this cycle, because if we don't break this cycle today in 18 years or in 15 years, when that child becomes an adult, then we're going to see it repeat. And I'm, I've seen, I've been in this long enough now in my career, that I've seen kids that were abused grow up to be abusers themselves, and that cycle repeats itself, so it's unfortunate for me, and I don't want to see this next generation of cops have to deal with this or children have to deal with this.
Last thing I would say is the, the financial support that's provided by the town councils and the other boards, you know, I don't mean to play semantics with any of you, but there's times we spend money, there's times we invest money. I see positive outcomes from this, I see positive dividends from this. And I think, again, Randy, I think you hit the nail on the head. And I think, again, Randy, I think you hit the nail on the head. It's the ability for us to meet these needs when and they, when they arise. And then also to continue meeting the needs of the family, much more so than just in the immediate. A lot of times, there's other things that stem and flow from this. Their home situations. Additionally, the, he mentioned about the uptick in cases. One thing with schools being out, I've always looked at it as first lines of defense sometimes in addition to law enforcement and CPS and our teachers. And the reality is, and it's a fact, that there's more positive child protective services referrals that come from schoolteachers than anywhere else. They're incredibly underappreciated and their mandated reporting status is crucial. And quite frankly, a teacher that sees a child 30 hours, 35 hours a week, knows the nuances of that little child as well as parents do. They can pick up on things, they can report things when things are off kilter. And that's what allows people like Randy and the Police Department CPS to mobilize. And CPS would have to go in and do that. That's why I think it's absolutely accurate that you're going to see an uptick. I think that isolation in a bad home environment is a recipe for disaster. And it's unfortunate that that's the situation. But getting teachers back involved is one way to kind of open this thing up. Not that they're looking for abuse, but abuse presents itself to them in regards to trust or the SRO program support, it's a trust. And so again, your support of the CAC, it's an investment. I mean it sincerely. But thank you all so much for the opportunity for us to be here. Again, if you can stop by, I know you're busy. Very similar to teachers, council members, mayors, town staff. It's very underappreciated as well. And again, I know your time is precious, but if you have five or 10 minutes to spare, I'd love to see you on the 25th.
And if you can't make the 25th, reach out to me. I'll set up an appointment and we'll go down there together and meet everybody. It doesn't have to be the open house. Here at the PD all day, Monday through Friday. If you want to see it after hours, I'll make arrangements for it happen too. So just reach out to me as well. Thank you all.
Thank you so much, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Assistant Director of Engineering, Capital Projects and Utilities, Justin St. Clair to present on transportation and stormwater capital projects.
All right, thank you, Mayor. This presentation is going to focus primarily on the transportation of stormwater projects. I believe upcoming next meeting, there's going to be more on the water and sewer as well as a presentation about public works on the upcoming work at the wastewater treatment facility. And just to kind of set the stage, this is more of a precursor to the budget process upcoming. And all these items presented kind of on the latter part of this project will be considered an up for discussion in that budget process. So, Quicker? Wanted to start off with a few of the projects that are in this year's budget but are completing either, you know, the next couple of weeks, the next couple of months. These four, Crystal Mill Road realignment and crossing improvements, the North Franklin Cambria corridor improvements and Depot Park Trail extension as well as the Roanoke Street sidewalk extension from Robert Street to Reading Road. These are all in the very last parts of their projects. So I didn't go into much detail as to what was left on those in the budget. Most of that's rollover from previous years, just as we're closing those out. Then I did want to hit the projects that are currently in this year's budget between the Transportation Group and the Stormwater Group. Just to try to, you know, bring back to memory what some of these are for and, you know, where we're at on those processes. So the first group is in the transportation system. I broke it down into intersections and signals for the first one. The two projects of importance here are Roanoke Street, Tower Road, Hampton Boulevard Intersection Signal. And this year takes us through engineering and right-of-way for the intersection signal improvements. This project consists of curb and gutter sidewalks, some street lighting, and of course, the new signal at this intersection with pedestrian accommodations, crossings, push buttons, the walk-don't-walk features and things like that. The construction will follow in future years. So the money shown here is just for completing engineering and then doing the right-of-way. So it's split 50/50, this is a VDOT revenue sharing job. And then for Arbor Drive, Pepper's Ferry Road Intersection Signal, this is pretty similar to Roanoke Street, Tower Road, except, you know, there is a signal there already. The main facet of this is adding dedicated left-turn lane from Arbor Drive onto Pepper's Ferry. If you've ever gone through there at lunchtime or in the afternoon, it backs up well past the DMV. And most of those people are turning left to go get on the bypass. So that's what this project is for. Again, this is engineering and right-of-way in this year and then the construction will follow in future years. The other group in the transportation is the trail sidewalks and paving. The project that is a transportation alternatives project, this is Roanoke Street Sidewalk under 460 Bypass Extension. This is connecting where we stopped it following branch intersection with the sidewalk and takes it all the way to Hubble Drive under the bypass, which is a surprisingly heavily used kind of path through there. I see people walking through there more and more, it seems like. This is a transportation alternatives H-SIP project. So it's 80-plus percent funded from VDOT and FHWA. What's funded in this year is engineering and right-of-way and actually construction if we're able to get there before July 1st next year. The other project in here is our standard annual paving and primary extension program. We do have, do, we break that up into local streets and then the higher volume streets that VDOT helps pay for, actually pays 100% for. We haven't determined the extent of paving and/or repairs on the local town streets yet. That's something we'll pick up in the upcoming months and get a consultant to help us evaluate those and also do inspections. The primary extension projects that we applied for last fall and should be hearing about shortly is Roanoke Street from 460 Bypass down to Depot Street. So that long stretch of that five-lane road there, the four-lane, the chicken lane. And then Pepper's Ferry Road westbound. So this is from Arbor Drive to North Franklin Street on the Goodwill Outback side. And that's funded through State of Good Repair, which is 100% match from V- it's not even match, I guess it's 100% funded from VDOT. This year, they decided to federalize it, so that does make it a little bit more complicated. But it's something that we'll work through and handle. They also did offer more money this year than the traditional $1 million a year. So that, that helps. And then hitting the stormwater, these are projects again that are currently in budget. Downtown Watershed Study. This would be looking at remodeling or submitting a remodel for the floodplain down near the North Franklin Street, Depot Street intersection. It has the potential to lower flood insurance. I view those businesses. And then the Christiansburg Industrial Parks and Water Management Improvements. That is to work on the basin that's over at the Christiansburg Industrial Park off of Roanoke Street out near Schuler Motor Mile. We are going to apply for SLIF funding this fall. I don't know necessarily what the state will be providing for that. The state's kind of in limbo for some of the purely state-funded projects. So we don't know where that's at yet. That would include engineering and construction funds. And then the last project here is Hickok Street Improvements. This is also revenue sharing job with the other street jobs we have. So this pipes a storm drain system under Hickok Street and aims to address downtown building flooding on West Main Street. And we do have engineering right-of-way budgeted, but construction will follow in future years. So that's a 50/50 match from the state. And then there's two more, Sleepy Hollow Drainage Improvements. This is to look at stream erosion out on Sleepy Hollow Road from Cambria Street down to, what is that street? It's not down to, well, anyway, it's downstream, I guess. I can't think of the actual street it goes to. And we do want to evaluate the effectiveness of the stormwater facility down at the bottom there. Again, want to apply for SLIF funding, which would be a 50% match from DEQ. Right now, we just have engineering budgeted to get that design started and get us a good application to go to the state in hopes of getting that money.
Justin, that goes down to Independence.
Yes, sir.
That's the pipe, that's the steel plate arch, the new culvert we put in.
That's right, not too many years ago, yes, sir.
Anyway, that's, that's moving up the water channel, the water basin.
Yeah.
Upstream.
Went away. Okay. And then the College Street Drainage PER. Council authorized us to move forward with this a couple of meetings ago. And this aims to address the flooding on portions of College Street between Rafford and Moose. This initial money provides us a chance to go and get a PER for alternatives analysis of the potential solutions. And as part of that, we'll investigate what type of funding is available to address that just to help to leverage what money the town is able to put forward to it. And now, I was going to jump over to the other projects that were initially shown in the budget. And then once COVID hit, we pulled those back for obvious reasons. Most of them are transportation projects. There was one stormwater project that was pulled back. But I'm just going to hit these kind of more at an overview level. The first one is Traffic Signal Study. This is going out, seeing what we have out there because some of these signals are exceptionally old. We typically don't touch something that old with any new lights or anything because people don't like to sign off on things they don't know actually work. So evaluate existing infrastructure downtown and establish a place and plan. The next two projects, the transportation alternatives projects, this actually, I believe there was discussion on these previously to go ahead and tell VDOT that we were good to move forward on these. This is pedestrian signals at Waze Lane in North Franklin, also First Street and North Franklin. They are 80/20. So in FY21, we only have engineering started on that with right-of-way and construction in future years. The North Franklin Bridge Deck Rehab. This is to start engineering for a deck rehab plan to address the aging infrastructure. That's basically the biggest and meanest bridge we have in town. We have a couple other culvert, larger culverts and bridges, but that by far is our biggest bridge asset that we have to take care of. So want to go ahead and make sure that we're in place to do a rehab on that prior to, you know, further degradation of the deck. And then the last part is the overflow parking at the Aquatic Center. We just want to go ahead and complete construction of that parking lot. We graded it out, traveled it previously. Want to go ahead and move forward in finishing whatever responsibilities we have to get that closed out.
Can I ask you, where is the North Franklin Bridge, the deck rehab at?
It's the large bridge just past the Aquatic Center that goes over Crab Creek and the railroads.
Oh, okay.
They're between the Aquatic Center.
Bridge in town, right?
Yeah.
I think we have a bridge on Depot Street, right? That old one, Roanoke Street? There might be a lot of two actual bridges. Well, Ravenolz is, and the new one at Depot Park Trail.
Before Jim Court, I'm sorry to interrupt. And I'm not going to speak for council, but I would ask maybe, as we see what happens in Roanoke when they do rehabs on their bridges down there, they're trying to make them a little bit more aesthetically pleasing to the community. And again, I don't want to speak for council, but if there's any way that we would have an option, since that is the most heavily used bridge in town, that maybe we could do something like they're doing. And I believe perhaps universities want to do something with theirs going across the Devon Center to make that look, when they're rehabbing, they're going to make it look a little bit more pleasing for the community reflective. That's all.
Okay, sure.
Maybe an option to bring the council at a later date for us to weigh in on.
Yes, sir.
I like that.
Absolutely. Okay. And then these last three projects are proposed revenue sharing projects. The town applied for these back last fall. From the state's perspective, revenue sharing is somewhat in limbo. They're not sure how that's going to move forward. But these are three projects, Betty Drive Realignment, North Franklin Street Sidewalk from Elm Street to Mill Lane and then Cambria Trail. Pretty, pretty self-explanatory as to what these are on Betty Drive. And then, of course, sidewalk on the eastern side of North Franklin from Elm down to Mill Lane. And then the construction of a 10-foot multi-use trail from Mill Lane to Cambria Square for the Cambria Trail. Anything from here would just be put in as engineering for FY21. And again, that's kind of if VDOT decides to move forward or how they're, how they're so pleased to decide how they want to move forward revenue sharing this year. And then for the stormwater system, there were two here. Stone Street Culvert was delayed. This is to begin the design for culvert placement. At Stone Street, we're across a town branch behind Kroger. It's that, I think it's a Triple 36 that goes through there just upstream of the stream restoration that we did a couple of years ago at Depot Park. This would be engineering only with construction in future years. And then there are a handful of kind of larger, more difficult box culverts around town that need to be replaced. One being at Second and Fleeger, one on Sherwin Drive. And just things that are a little more challenging than just digging up an older pipe and replacing it with another same-sized pipe that's undersized or ineffective for what it's doing. With that, if we have any questions, I'll try to answer best I can.
Hi, everyone.
Yes, sir.
One of your very first slide was on Tower Road.
Yes.
They're putting the light in there. Have you got any ideas of when that might arrive?
Our schedule to VDOT, I believe, is advertising probably next fall, probably a year from now. So construction would start in the October, November timeframe. We have to move forward through right-of-way acquisition with a couple parcels to get some easements and such through there.
I mean, I've never been there at peak time, but I hear it gets quite, quite tricky.
Val could tell us.
It's been, I've been enjoying during COVID-19 and when we were all closed down, I could just like pull up a little.
It's easier to use a lot easier.
It's changing now.
I got a quick question. We approved additional funding for paving. What project were you not applying to in the year?
The additional funding for paving, did we just end up funding that 100% from previously? So we did end up for this, for what I would say FY20, we were able to, I'm going to try to remember what we actually paved before. I know we just finished up Alexis Stafford, Buffalo. We repaved North Franklin Street, Oak Tree, Tall Oak. I think there was one more. Oh, Windsor. I think those were the main ones, we did the annual paving. And then for the FY21, I believe there was just an initial reduction, but we decided to fund that 100% from what we have typically. So we haven't identified those specific streets yet. There are some streets that we're getting to the point where they need to be actually repaired versus just milled and filled. And that's been our typical go-to recently. But there are some that just putting new pavement on top of old, it's just not going to last. So they're going to have to be a little bit, you know, designed, engineered prior to going out and doing those. So we'll probably group a couple of projects with repair and then, of course, include just some milling and filling and topping. Have a group of projects coming up starting next spring.
I know the people on Windsor are really feel appreciated of what you guys did and how quickly you did it, you know?
Thank you.
And they're very.
A lot of that goes to our contractor and our inspector on site. So making sure everything goes smoothly.
Do you foresee having a lot of issues to get funding from VDOT and other funding sources for the national share?
I really couldn't say. I know, I mean, the state's main revenue source, well, big source for the state is sales tax. So I think that has taken a hit. And they've been pretty reluctant to let us know where things are because they just, they don't know either. I think everyone's just trying to figure out what's happening next.
And then another question, the project on Hickok Street, what is the timeframe for it to be finished? And then I imagine you're not going to be doing any structural, anything on there as far as for the farmer's market? This is just going to be fixing the road, right?
This is just picking up the drainage where it crosses Hickok Street south of West Main Street, running it down Hickok Street, moving kind of across Main Street to get down the other part of Hickok Street and then turning it back into. So that's, that's what this is for, to realign that sewer out from, not sewer, excuse me, storm drain out from under those buildings through there.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Brief comment, great presentation.
Thank you.
Want to give a lot of great information for us, you know, making decisions. The, and it's actually made a comment about foretelling the future on VDOT funding. If you recall the last meet, or was it two meetings ago or one meeting? Was it the last meeting? When we won the LEP locally, the locality of the year. During my time on council, which is 14 years now, we've moved from the rumble seat to the back seat, to the front seat. we've moved from the rumble seat to the backseat, to the front seat as far as pace setting and spending our money. And so, we're going to fare better than average with all of our requests, because our staff demonstrates their understanding of project delivery and of meeting on-time, on-budget project delivery. So whatever the future holds, we're in the front seat. And it's, it's due to the way our staff has latched on to that and let us along. And also conclude with this, these projects that we put on the, on the back burner because of COVID, I fully hope that we'll revisit some of these in October. And one project that's near and dear in particular is the Cambria Trail, because we've got to keep pushing. But anyway, this list, we need to pull back when we hear our budget amendment and see if there's anything we want to put back into operating budget. Great presentation.
Thank you.
And we're, we're on VDOT's A-list for funding. I can assure you of that.
Can you please share that with us in an email? So I can also share with planning, because I know the planning department is always very interested about finding out what we are doing with that.
I'm sure, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. It was a great presentation.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thanks.
Thank you. This is a citizens' comments portion of the council meeting. Is there anyone here that would like to address council? If so, if you will name your address in three minutes. Is there anyone here to address council? Hearing number one, I will close the citizens' comments under committee reports. Have we had any, oh, go ahead, Melissa.
Cass, I take this off briefly so people can hear me. Today, there was an arts committee meeting, and we focused mostly on the mission statement. So by the end of the meeting, we had a really good one set. So we're going to mull it over for a few weeks and then come up with the final, and then proceed down more details. But it was a wonderful meeting today. Made great progress.
Mr. Harper? Mr. Stipes?
Brief update on the Air, the Virginia Tech Montgomery Airport. We had a meeting earlier today. We have Ino Bishop, Dr. Bishop, that we appointed as a first full meeting. And the report for council is that the airport had a soft opening of the new runway on August 1st. And our jet fuel sales have already, just during the first month under COVID with the runway extension, have already met the same as two years ago in 2018, or 2019. And we fully expect that the future is going to hold, you know, it's going to, we'll get a return on that investment with increased, increased fuel sales. But the airport is open. It's a soft opening. They're still wrapping up. Wayne would understand this term. There's substantial completion. They're still doing some fine grading. It'll be fully open probably next, this time next month. It is still closed in the evenings. They're doing some night work. But, and we will have an opening, or a grand opening for count all of our boards probably in the spring. It's probably not, maybe this fall, but it'll probably be in the spring. And it is going to be a big deal so everyone here can come out and actually look at our facility. And, but it's, things are looking very encouraging there with the first month of reopening to be back to that level. Thanks, Mayor.
And yes, the runway has been considerably lengthened, right?
It's been lengthened 900, 900 feet to 5100, or 5600 feet, I think, 5500 feet.
There's a whole new type of plane that can land.
It's, it's a whole new class of jets, and we're already having an increased travel on that. And this is under COVID, and this is without football. So it's, things are looking good, and we're probably going to capture some of the traffic that's going to our nearby airports, including Run-up for COVID travel.
Awesome.
Mr. Chubb?
No.
Mr. Bishop?
All right.
Ms. Hicks?
Yeah, I wanted to thank Brad Epple for working so hard. We are trying to come up with, with ideas on how to make a really fantastic Halloween, drive-through Halloween at the Rex Center this year. So I know he's working all the details and everything with that, so that's really exciting. And then also at the mall, we're planning to have an event for Christmas. So there's a lot of things that have to take place for that, but I'm very excited. I think everybody's really excited to hear that, so.
Good stuff.
It is. Very good. Discussions and actions by mayor and council. Recommendation of reappointment with Karen Drake Whitney to the board of zoning appeals for a term lasting from August 31st, 2020 to August 31st, 2025. And I believe Ms. Whitney is here tonight.
I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Karen Drake Whitney to the board of zoning appeals for a term lasting from August 31st, 2020 to August 31st, 2025. And thank you for your service.
Thank you. I'll second.
Got a motion in the second. Discussions?
For no, for anyone that does not know Ms. Drake Whitney, I know her from her, she used to be on the planning staff at the town of Blacksburg. She's been in Montgomery County. She has an excellent grasp of zoning practices. And most importantly, she knows Christiansburg and knows how to apply her decision-making to zoning and requests that affect their town. So not only have a solid background, but you, you know us, and I think you done, or we appreciate your service, I do. So thank you.
Karen, you're not a rookie on this board, are you?
Yeah.
She's not, she's not a rookie to volunteering for town committees, Aquatic Center?
Yes.
The central business, when I served, the same I serve now, you helped that sort of get rolling from it just being a youth committee that had only a couple of times a year. So you volunteered your time and efforts to make this town better. Appreciate it.
I'll ditto his statement. Your work is not easy, so thank you.
Karen, you have anything to offer?
No, just thank you for this opportunity.
Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Schewalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is Sixx, I thank you very much. Next is the ordinance to extend emergency procedures for to ensure the continuity of town government in response to COVID-19 disaster. I believe that is, is supposed to expire September 24th, and we're just asking to go ahead and extend this for, is there a time period on this thing, Randy, or is it?
It expires six months after the disaster is.
Okay, so we're in pretty good shape. So this is.
Six months after the disaster is over?
Yeah, that's, that comes out of the statute. The original draft that we had adopted in March, I guess, just expired in six months, which means it's why it's expiring in September. Statute actually says that you can have it expire six months after the end of the declared emergency, so.
So it could be two years and six months, or a year and six months. Hopefully, it's only three weeks, but that's beside the point.
Right, exactly. And you can repeal it anytime as well.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to extend the emergency procedures to ensure the continuity of town government in response to COVID-19 disaster.
Second. Motion in the second. Discussions? Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Schewalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That's Sixx, oh, thank you. Ordinance amending Chapter 30 Streets Sidewalks and Other Public Places of the Christiansburg Town Code in regards to use of public rights away in the B2 Central Business District. Is it set up to allow outdoor dining, amongst other things?
Potentially, or other displays.
I'll get it on the table. I, I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance amending Chapter 30 Streets Sidewalks and Other Public Places of the Christiansburg Town Code in regards to use of public right-of-way in the B2 Central Business District.
I'll second.
Got a motion in the second. Any discussion?
I have discussions about this. So I don't think it should just be for dining. It should be for all businesses under the B2.
Well, I think that it does. I think it permits sidewalk sales and this type of stuff also.
Signage, including that.
There were several things, dining was one, but there are several other items.
I just know dining is being the, the item in question. And so, I just want to make sure, because all their business, I know their business was targeted in the past about their sign. So I just want to make sure that this applies for everybody. Also, I have problems with this, because we're trying to kind of change an ordinance with no public comments, no public hearing. In the past, Mr. Stipes had told me that we could not make a change without having public comments. I had to wait to come back to council. And all of you guys agree with you. And so, it's not that I'm against about this. I think this is, is a good change. But I also think that it has to be discussed, because there is a lot of things in there. There is also, we're also talking about, one of the complaints that I just, I was looking at it, it was discussing about trash cans and dumpsters and things like that. So I know we're talking about this ordinance, and it seems like it's just about tables and things and signs, but I want to make sure that all those other things get covered. Because just several weeks ago, I was downtown Christiansburg at the farmer's market, and I was told that the sidewalks could not be open because of social distancing, because you have to have tents. And because they were going to be providing some kind of food, you could not have, you could not have sidewalks. So that meant that you had to go through the middle of the street. And my kids are really got yelled at because they were going in the middle of the street. So I guess my thing is, how is that going to work with social distancing?
Were your kids riding through the middle of the farmer's market or shopping?
They were not riding. They were actually walking, kind of taking their scooters. They always do this downtown.
Brady, why aren't we doing a public hearing on this?
It's not affecting the zoning chapter. It's affecting the Streets and Sidewalks chapter, which is basically tailed property, tailed right-of-way. Amendments to the code that require basically, effectively land use, and that's private land use, would have to be referred to planning commission and do require a public hearing. If they affect the zoning chapter, there were the subdivision chapter. But this, like I say, doesn't affect zoning or subdivisions. It also doesn't affect rates or fees, which is another item that would basically require a public hearing. But like I say, if it doesn't affect the land use regulations, such as the zoning chapter or subdivision chapter, it doesn't affect a public hearing.
We're talking about changing ordinances here. So do we have to go back and, and look at the noise ordinances again that you guys may, some other businesses go through in the past, just because some people want that change? I mean, this came out of one complaint, and then we had gotten other complaints in the past, but the other complaint was not taken serious. And then all of a sudden, somebody shows up, and this person is taken serious. And then all of a sudden, we want to change the agenda and take a bowl dining.
Well, you can change it, this is dinner.
This wasn't the agenda this week.
Well, I'd like to add also that the business that's affected has been a upstanding business downtown Main Street. And people have wanted these park benches and places to eat outside, much like the brewery has requested as well. So I see this also, not just because of a complaint, but it is time for us to make a change in relation to COVID and more people wanting to eat outside. So I see this as a positive change for all of our businesses. And if we do put this off, you've got a business that's suffering right now because they can't have people sitting and eating outside, and that should require our attention.
People wanted speakers at the Starlight years ago. And today, we're talking about, and I understand that, I understand that. But the reality is, you're really using over 40% of the sidewalk. So now what we're doing is we're going to give permit, a permission to Randy to make those decisions, to go and tell a business, okay, it's okay for you to do that. But the other business that is competing with, I'm sorry, about your wife's business, we're going to, we're going to change this.
We'll spend more money with.
I make a motion to call.
But I'm just saying, we're changing a rule within.
I'll motion to call for the vote to approve number C, the ordinance amending, excuse me, where are my glasses? Chapter 30 Streets Sidewalks and Other Public Spaces of the Christiansburg Town Code in regards to the use of public right-of-way in the B2 Central Business District.
So second?
Yeah.
Is everyone going to go through the conditional permit process, which it takes, you know, weeks to get this done?
Would you please call the robe?
I'm still speaking about this, Mr. Barber.
We have already ended that. We call for a vote.
Well, I'm still speaking, and I'm not getting the answers. This seems like a political stunt right here.
Mr. Chair, out of order. Call the, call the vote, Michelle?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
I abstain.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Schewalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
May I ask why the abstention? Do you have an issue or relation to this?
I just wish we will discuss more about this, because I'm afraid that some businesses are going to be treated different than others. And that's why I'm abstaining.
Why would you abstain? Because you own a business downtown?
Because I don't feel like all businesses are treated the same.
So you abstain because you feel like the businesses won't be treated the same by our town manager?
Exactly. They're really to the same way. Excuse me?
Not because you have a business downtown.
What does that have anything to do with it? Does that have anything to do with Mr. Schewalter?
Football laws.
It'd be considered a conflict of interest if you voted on it. That's why I figured you would abstain from it.
And this whole ordinance is on outdoor dining, seating signage, and other temporary.
I don't have a dining place right now.
It's on more than dining. Consideration of digital signage for fire department recreation center and town hall and CARES Act funding.
Also move to approve the digital signage for fire department, rec center, and town hall, using town hall CARE Act funding.
Second. Motion in the second. Discussions?
Yes, I do have discussion. It was brought to my attention by a person of the aquatic board asking the question of perhaps why isn't their sign included in this when they had requested it a long time ago? So I wanted to present that question.
I've got a brief presentation on this, if you'd like.
Okay. I'm just passing through the question, so if they're watching, they can get the answer.
Okay, just give you, I guess, a little history and reasoning for the request. And go ahead, next slide. CARES Act funding is eligible for facilities that we've previously discussed. Facilities that we've discussed in the past have been the Aquatic Center, the Fire Department Rescue Squad, the Rec Center, and the Town Hall. Under last year's budget, we had money in the budget for the Aquatic Center signage. And therefore, it is not eligible for CARES Act money.
Wasn't that pulled?
If it was budgeted before March 1st of this year, then you cannot spend CARES Act money towards it. Therefore, the Aquatic Center sign would not be eligible. The other three locations I would view as being eligible then. Could maybe move on to the next sign.
So, Randy, since it was in the budget, that's why, even though we didn't approve it, that's why it can't be.
Correct.
I believe that she has already, Ms. Baldwin, has already picked out the type of sign that's going to be there.
And we could, and we can still purchase that out of general fund dollars if we wish. Part of the purpose of the sign is to help with communications. Obviously, you have multiple facilities covered with those locations. You would reach audiences that you wouldn't otherwise reach with information, like our website and social media, news channels, and newsletters. And also, just to let you know, it is CARES Act applicable, because we could and would, certainly would use it for COVID-19 updates to publish.
Are our signs going to follow the signs restrictions that we currently have in place?
Get to design here in just a second. Basically, because of the deadline, December 30th, we've already advertised for an RFP. That does not commit the town to, to spending the money. That basically gets pricing for the signage. So we're going to bring that, you can bring that back to council if you like. Also, I'll let you know that digital signs have been a little bit of a controversy here and it's been fairly debated as to whether we pursued the digital signage at any of our town facilities originally. So the, under the RFP, the proposals are due September twenty first. And that's, like I say, just kind of part of the reason for the turnaround. We've advertised it as potential multiple different side designs too. If you can design, propose potentially the fire and rescue squad would look like this. They did desire a kind of a special design for their facilities and that's what they had selected, just if you, again, for your consideration. Can maybe move on to the next slide. This is what we had designed under the wayfinding signage program. That's what we would propose certainly at the town hall and the rec center. Like I say, Chief Hanks has a pretty strong desire for unique signage, fire and rescue signage. That's at council's discretion. Chief Hanks is here and available if you have any questions for him in regards to propose signage. We can bring those options back to council as well. Like I say, go ahead, maybe move on. Estimated cost at most per sign, we're looking forty-five to fifty thousand dollars. We had previously, the pricing, I think we've gotten only two thousand eighteen, that signage for the fire department was twenty-nine to fifty thousand. Those are a couple of years old. But again, I think we could do all three signs for at most between forty-five and fifty thousand dollars each. And I do think it's eligible under the CARES Act money because of the messengers that we would use in relation to COVID-19 and the fact that we would be reaching kind of a unique audience with the signage because we do reach people that we can't reach with social media effects.
You know, I was originally pretty against digital signs. And I think I made the comment four or five years ago that we didn't want to have Christiansburg look like Las Vegas. But I have, I know Ms. Baldwin showed me what she proposes for the aquatic center. And I see what Mr. Hanks and that. And I think that we're going out of our way to try to make sure these things are, are going to look credible and not just look like home to home signs. And I appreciate that.
I would like, I'm supporting this, but I would like to know why we're not using a common theme. Mr. Hanks is here. Why would we not have standard branding?
We've been trying to do this sign for fire and rescue for probably four years now. We come up with that design and we showed it right there. We come up with that three years ago. Funding and stuff, you know, that's unique, you know, on one side, fire department would be unique to the fire department on the rescue squad side, it would be unique to the rescue squad. The signage would be optimal from both sides of the sign right now. I call it the one-sided sign syndrome. You know, we have one side of the sign because it's letterboard. They have one side of the sign, it's letterboard on the other side. But whatever we would put on the sign would be unique for both sides. It would show both directions of the street. We designed, our design was done, you know, we finally took money last year and had the design drawn up and actually had architects, engineer, prints drawn for the sign because we figured we might phase the thing in because getting all the funding at one time sometimes is difficult to be able to do that. But we have, we originally have come up and agreed, fire and rescue had agreed on that sign design. We're open to doing something different, but our volunteers are unique to the town. And, you know, we try to, try to get them active and get them involved in what we do around the station, you know, to make them have a sense of belonging to what goes on, you know, in project. And we're open, if we get the sign, we're open to doing whatever we need to do.
Billy, would you guys be open to probably not mimicking the town, the town hall sign or the rec center sign, but incorporating some of the elements since we've done, we've put so much work into making sure that we're branding?
Yeah.
Just incorporate, I'm not sure how to do that, but just incorporating some of the huckleberry.
Yeah, some of the, like around the top part, can you go back to the sign? Like the arch, the sign section itself is the middle section of the sign. And up at the arch up there, we want to have a fire department logo on one side, rescue logo on the other side. But we could take some of the elements of our wayfinding signs that we have and fill that in on top of that. I think it's, I think it's dual counsel or the day. We're up for anything. This is just a good opportunity to be able to use some of this money, be this project done. All three signs, the fire department sign, fire and rescue sign, the rec center sign and the town hall sign can all be programmed from all three locations. So Melissa needed to put something on the sign, it could go out to all three signs and it would be on all three signs. They're all interlinked, you know, through the IT department and through our web capabilities and stuff. So, yeah, we're game to do that. We'd always, the reason we submitted is we've already spent the money and this is already engineered and this is drawn. Trying to save money on trying to re-engineer something else. But, you know, we're open for anything.
Randy, I think that's a good point that you have. And I think it's a good idea to have continuity throughout the town. I appreciate that.
I also noticed it's about twelve foot tall, which is really big.
It's not quite as tall as the existing sign that's standing there right now.
Yeah.
Because see, our existing sign is set in a flower box. Flower box is about three and a half foot off the ground plus the signage. So we're right at the same height as where we're at now. Twelve foot sounds tall. But when you go down there and stand on the ground in front of it, it, this right here won't be as tall as what we've got. It's the optic.
Yeah.
The twelve foot optic is what's getting on that.
Any other comments?
Yes. Have other localities been using the CARES Act money to pay for signs like this?
It takes on like that.
I think it's a great way to get the message out. Unfortunately, for years, we've put off the aquatic center sign until this year. And if we hadn't had it, if we had put it off again for another year, we would, the aquatic center could be one of these signs as well. But we were a little proactive this year.
Right. Now it kind of hurts them sadly.
Well, before we vote, can we be clear on what we're doing? I mean, I heard from Mr. Hanks and the last thing I would like to do is run it around with our volunteers. They're probably, you know, they're the reason, they're the wind beneath our wings. But I do, this is just me, but I want to be clear what we're voting on. I personally think the branding that we're doing, if we're too different at all, it's going to take away from what we're, our figure of goal, which is we're a team. And driving down Cambria a couple of days ago and seeing the Cambria sign, it's just really making an impact. I'm here, I'm sure everyone has heard comments. I feel safe in saying we've all heard comments. And I don't want to put up something that's really different. Maybe slightly different, but not really different.
I would agree with that.
If other council members, we need to be clear, I would like to be clear on what we're voting for here. I support this, but I think we've taken a lot of time investment to brand ourselves and I respect the fact that it's been done three or four years ago, but we're at now.
I think all we would have to do probably on the RFP is go back and do an addendum on it, because it's already been submitted, it's already out there. We just have to go back and do an addendum on it to put in whatever you'd like, I would think, right?
Yeah, I think you could probably take that finish and design the town and add a mention and just add some of the huckleberry finish to the top of it in that top section should match the other sign pretty well. Yeah, we need an addendum to incorporate a little bit of the change.
Use the same brick. Use the same brick. Some color schemes to it too. Color schemes the same.
Yeah.
Do you think something to match this with simply two, two brick columns up the side?
Yeah.
I'd probably look at, myself, I'd look at the cost both ways. Is it better to put a metal pole or the brick sides?
Well, the bricks will be, bricks will be more expensive. All right, I mean, construction materials through the roof right now, whatever you do, but.
So I'd be more inclined to look at something like this to keep costs down as much as we can so those monies can go as far as they can.
I really like the brick on the sign.
I'm afraid if we go beating the horse too long, we're not going to get a proposal in time to get, let Bill can spin it.
I would encourage, I mean, I like this for the rec and this is me personally. I know the volunteers and both chiefs have worked hard and they're willing to incorporate our branding that we put out this year into their sign. And I don't have a problem with it. I know if they were going to do it anyway, we have federal CARES Act money to do it. And it's an honor to the volunteers to say, look, you know, they are special for the town, as Randy and all of us know. But, you know, it's something they had, they had had their hearts on, they're willing to incorporate our new branding into it. So it will be a little bit different, but that's fine. It's a different type of first responder out there.
The LED sign part, are they all going to be the same size for the three?
I think this one's going to be, this one's going to be, ours is going to be larger than what you would put on the lawn down here in front of town hall. Ours sits further back off the road. I don't, I haven't read the specs as far as what we're doing at the rec center here. But the one here, I think, is supposed to be head on right here coming off a running street. So it won't, it shouldn't be as large as this, probably because of the blinding effect maybe. But I haven't looked at the specs, so I can't speak to that.
Randy, could Melissa be involved in this so all three are coordinated? Because she was really intricate in making sure all this looked good.
Yes.
She is.
Yeah, good.
Also, would it display?
Yeah, right.
I think the changes that we're proposing are very much of a cosmetic thing, not a structure. Can we just pass it today and just, you guys figure out what you're going to do with as far as those little changes? Is that possible?
Would you want us to basically just kind of give us a head nod to proceed with the RFP, but to try to incorporate the wayfinding signage as best we can with the fire and rescue signage? And we can bring it back to you.
I'm a hundred percent fine with it. I mean, you heard, we want it to be different, but not too different. It's fine to do the rest of it.
That sounds good.
Madam Court?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hepburn? Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter? Councilman Stipes?
Six oh, thank you. CARES Act update, small business recovery grant program. Andrew, is that one yours? So get up that microphone and speak real loud. Pull that mask off and speak loud.
I haven't heard of it. Everybody said online too.
So in front of everybody's, I think under the agenda, everybody should have a list. This was discussed at the last meeting. You know, the small business recovery grant program is going well. We have twenty-seven applications in the hopper right now at different stages. We will need a review committee, as was mentioned before. I think we had talked about five to seven members have put out feelers to about that number of folks. What I have before you tonight, folks that have committed are the three on the sheet. And to be honest, that's probably going to be a good size group to do this review if the names are acceptable because, you know, looking at what Blacksburg is doing, what Montgomery County is doing, they're looking at about a group of three as well.
This group of three is the whole, the whole shebang is that Blacksburg, Montgomery County and us, is that correct?
They would be different people. This would just be for Christiansburg. So we have Cindy Snyder, who works with Virginia Community Capital. She's assistant vice president, small business loan officer. She's been there since 2017. I believe she was with the D H C D before that. And she works all over southwest Virginia, but of course, Community Capital is headquartered here on Pepper's Ferry Red in Christiansburg. Cheryl King Tucker is a business advisor for the New River Valley. She's worked through the Roanoke region, regional small business development center for about a year and a half now. And she has a background as a CPA as well as a significant amount of business experience. And then Sharon Scott, who's working with, actually, she is working with all three localities, grant review program. So she sits on Blacksburg as well as Montgomery County's, that is my understanding. So she kind of brings continuity to the three groups and the applications that are being reviewed. So she's been the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce since 2013. And really, it's a, it's a four to six week gig that we're asking them to do as far as reviewing the applications. And, and most of the work is going to be done by staff. We're really going to be bringing kind of most of the applications in. If they, if they meet the criteria, then they will be recommended for funding. Where there are specific questions about whether they meet the criteria or not, that's where we're going to lean on our professional, you know, field experts here for just their opinions.
You know, I think that's good that you have Ms. Tucker, the one that, she's a CPA and has some background there. Money is such a big involvement today and having somebody like that who has a good background, I think that would be really helpful.
I support the people. I've worked with some of them in the past and they are, I think you've picked the right people for the right job. I, one hundred percent.
How many businesses do you say that have applied so far?
So twenty-seven. So we are hoping that there will be more. So if there's any opportunity.
So that's only seven hundred, two thousand, about seven hundred and two thousand dollars that we can use, that, I mean, if they were to get the twenty-seven thousand?
If they had up to fifty employees, correct. So we are, we are seeing more smaller businesses that would have, you know, that are having one to three full-time employees, more than larger businesses. But there definitely is the need for the businesses that we've seen so far.
What is the plan if not many businesses, more businesses apply?
Well, we're encouraging everyone to get into the system. I mean, there could be additional dollars that would, you know, could be available, you know, if we, you know, if they are in the system. We will evaluate that to see, you know, has everybody had an opportunity, felt like they've had an opportunity to get into, you know, to apply for the application? We want to make sure all businesses, you know, are aware of it, have had time to think about it, have had time to pull together the information that they need to for the application because, you know, they, as a small business, they have a lot going on and we recognize that. So we want to make sure that if this program, this program in the timeframe as best we can works with them, not against it.
I have another question. Is it very costly and can you use money from the CARES Act money to send a letter to every business owner that you may think may be able to get some of this money in the town of Christiansburg? Is that a possibility?
Yeah, it is. It's a matter of, yeah, the staff resources to do so. And, you know, but that is something that we've, we've been pulling together an email to send out to folks, but, you know, a letter may be a bit more effective. We have flyers that have gone out. We're going to be doing a discussion that will be broadcast to, by the Small Business Development Corporation on Friday, that will talk, that will go out to everybody that they've worked with and their listserv to talking about the program. But yes, that is, you know, that, you know, we are running short on time, so mail isn't always the fastest way to communicate, but that is certainly something could be, could be effective.
How do we make sure that that can happen this week? Do we need a vote tonight or?
As far as the review committee, that would be what we're asking for.
To send letters?
Well, yeah, we can, we can look at it again. Yeah, I mean, it is a matter of just, you know, pulling together the staff time if that is a, you know, if that is something that council would like us to do. It's certainly something that, you know, we've thought about.
I would like to just reach out one way or another. And even if we had to, I think this thing expires the twentieth. If we had to expand it to the thirtieth, just to give more time, I would certainly, I'd be, I'd be in favor of doing that. But I think that certainly within the next few days, either a letter or email contact with all of our people that have like business licenses in town that would fall under this.
And we've communicated from time to time during the COVID situation with them, so.
This could be sort of like sending out wedding invitations, though. We're going to miss people. And it's, we're in giddyup mode now. I mean, we're in giddyup mode. I'm even worried just listening to. I'm even worried, just listening to the constraints we have with time. We need that quickly on this, and I respect this very much. But I think we do what we can do expeditiously, which includes articles in the newspaper. You know, we can put ads in the newspaper, right? Our local newspapers. And, but I'm afraid if we, if we concentrate and shift our staff attention and time to letters, like I said, it's going to be like wedding invitations. Not everyone's going to get one or look at it.
Or get it in time.
And it's, that's expensive, and it's expensive from a staff resource time. It's also expensive from a mailing perspective. But I would promote advertising through these, you know, electronic means and also through public media needs in little letters. I think letters is going to bulk down our staff.
That's true.
And time is of the essence. Like I said, we're in giddy-up mode. And if we don't do this, we're going to miss opportunity. And nobody's going to get any, you know, we're not going, businesses aren't going to get the relief that, that we're intending to provide.
What sort of flyers did you put out there?
So we've had basically flyers to groups to pass out, like downtown Christiansburg gang, a local shop, local group, you know, that has come before council before, we've provided flyers to them as well. Or at least a PDF that could be, you know, printed. So we, we could certainly do more flyers and, but that has been something that, you know, that, yeah. If we had another two months, we could really do a really hefty outreach campaign. But, you know, certainly something that we could do more flyers.
What about Mike's idea of extending it, what, until the third year?
Well, if we keep, that's going to put us in October. This money has to be spent by 31st of December. We have pretty healthy rolls of taxpaying businesses through BEEPole, right? We have a lot of digital ways we get information out. And I'm not stealing, I'm not trying to steal the show here. I'm saying, we have to get this done. And if we, if we delay, and I am concerned about burdening staff and the time expense for staff and cost of getting letters out. And, okay, we sent it to Dan and Shelley should have gotten it. And I never saw it, because that, that's an old, that's an old address and people, you know, just, anyway, I'm done. But we need, I will emphasize to council, we need to act on this and we need to.
I don't think 10 days is going to kill us.
If that's what council wants, that's what we'll do.
Is there anybody else in here that will support the extension of 10 days? I mean, this just showed up the other day.
What do you feel about?
We have been making those decisions about giving that money to DCI and Chamber of Commerce the other day. And all the time we're shifting, just you're making sure that the town gets all the money and gets a group to disperse the money. But at the same time, I just feel like that information has not been out there to all the business owners. So I agree with you, we should put in an article in the newspaper. Reaching out to older people that will probably read the mail. Not everybody is on Facebook. Not everybody reads the newspaper nowadays. So I personally think that maybe sending a letter would be a good thing. But if we don't do the letter thing, at least give business owners at least 10 more days. Because right now, a lot of people have been trying to figure out how they can work with the PPP grants and trying to make sure that they are up in business and, and trying to follow the restrictions from the state. I think it's a lot that we're asking business owners to, to deal with during this time. And, yeah, that's great that it is money that we got from the state to give away. But I do think that 10 days is not going to make a huge, you know, it's going to make a huge difference for them. But I don't think it's going to make a huge difference for us.
What will they do to us?
I'm sorry?
What will extending it?
Well, I think I would just need to touch base with, with Montgomery County and Blacksburg because we all had the same deadline lined up. So we, you know, to see if they would be comfortable pushing it out as well.
For them not to extend it to their businesses.
Right, and then we need to keep our grant portal open for 10 more days. And we do have, the nonprofit portal has opened today. And we do anticipate the childcare portal opening, you know, in two weeks.
What are the other, other people?
I can, I can reach out to them tomorrow.
Do they see how they feel about it?
Yeah.
I think council would say if they feel about 10 days, no more, if they don't like it, then.
They'll have to, they'll have to do the same thing we do. They're going to have to take it back to their board. None of these staff members is going to make a decision on that.
Can I throw out an option? I'd like to throw out an option. A banner can be printed in 24 hours or less. Why don't we get four or five of them, at a decent, not huge, you know, affordable, three by five maybe, and put them strategically through the town? That can be done in one day, two at the most, assuming Public Works has some time. And that's all the high traffic when people are coming and going from their businesses to and from school. I think that would get a lot of attention right now, similar to what we're hoping that our, our future LED signs would offer. But that's a quick turnaround in keeping with our due date and we can get the word out faster.
So I, yeah, so I could discuss it with, you know, with the county in Blacksburg on the deadline date. And maybe through Randy and the weekend, the weekly update, provide you all a, an update on that.
Yeah, talk to them and see what they're doing.
It would be at least 200 to 300, I would say.
How much work will it be? Is there something that I can come and help you guys the whole day? How many days will it actually take for us? Do you guys print out the same letter? I can just write down all the names or whatever, can I help?
Print out all the labels and, you know, it would just be a matter of assembly. Yeah, certainly that's something that, you know, I think, I think, you know, that is something that we can put staff time towards and get that out. If that's, and then we can consider the banners as well, if that, you know, that's desirable. Because I think, you know, it is something that we can at least say, yes, we got, we got the information out to make sure we're covering all our bases. That's desirable by council.
They're doing 12 days right now. That's what we're talking about.
Mail drop would have to be.
So by the time you get banners up, it's going to have to take a week, probably ambitiously. So, okay, well, I said, let's go for my piece. I think we need to go, I think we need to roll on and do as much as we can. Melissa can get the news, or the news stations involved, news outlets on behalf of all three locality. That's a good story. But I think, I think 10 days doesn't matter a whole lot, except it does right now. Let me put it that way. 10 days doesn't matter a whole lot, but it does right now.
The businesses licenses that we have right now, do we have an email address for every single one of those businesses?
That is certainly something that we don't have for all businesses, but we have a decent one. And we've, you know, through emails that we've spent, sent out this spring, we've had, we have more updated ones than we have. So yes, so that is something that we certainly could, that would be something that could, that could happen quicker than others.
That would be a fantastic idea.
How many do you think we don't have emails on?
Percentage?
It's hard to say.
10 to 20% that we don't have one?
So why don't we send? Why don't we send letters to them and continue the email blitzes to the others? But also in the letter that we're sending to the businesses, we don't have emails on, we also request that they provide us their email address.
When you renew your business license, it does ask you, so it's your choice whether you include it or not?
And we decided to go on the letters. I can provide you some, come out. I hope I can go on there.
So we're going to move on emails that we have. And we'll just send out letters to the ones we don't have. And that hopefully will go out in the next day or two.
You have to.
It has to. That's the only thing, you know, I would talk to Blacksburg, tell them we're looking at, and in Montgomery County. You know, if we're not extending it 10 days, maybe we should extend it five days. And split the middle of it. And that's, I mean, that's got them timed. And certainly, if the ones that you're sending out the email, the letters to, if there is an application they have to have, it certainly wouldn't, I don't know whether you get it online or at least you'll tell them where to get it online?
Right, it would be, yes, it would be online.
All right.
It's online now.
It is, yeah. It's basically, it's an all online process.
It's online, it's on our website, it's on our town page, it's on everything else, so, yeah.
You know, I saw you put it on the homepage of the Big Brother. I appreciate that.
Any other questions? Blue Fox? Staff reports down there?
Virginia Municipal League Conference is October 7th and 8th. That's a Wednesday and Thursday. And if you're interested in attending, if you could, please let Michelle know. This is, of course, the conference that we typically attend annually, but they're doing it digitally this year. So, and they're doing it a little bit different, obviously, different format and doing it different days of the week than they typically do it. But it's Wednesday and Thursday, October 7th and 8th. And if you would like to attend, if you could, just let Michelle know. And also just to let you know, the chiefs are here. If you need, give me an update and regards to health task force. That's, that's all I have.
Ms. Brown?
Nothing, thank you.
Other staff, Mr. Williams? Nelson? Will, you don't have anything? I have from lady.
Ladder truck should be your first October.
It's what?
First October.
It's what?
For the new ladder truck.
Okay, good.
We'll do the final inspection all of the week of the 21st. And if everything looks good, then they'll deliver it the week after that.
Do you have plans for any kind of an open house in Stevens?
Yeah, we'll, we'll do something, whatever the governor allows us to do. But we, the truck won't go into service immediately when it gets here. We've got to write extensive training program that we've got to put everybody through for that truck. So, but it'll be available for you guys to come look at when it comes in. And we'll try to incorporate something, you know, into Fire Prevention Week. We decided not to have the Fire Prevention Parade, sort of following suit with Kielaski Fire Department. They canceled their parade, first time their parade's ever been canceled. Just don't think the optic is good right now to have a parade.
Are you going to talk later about the virus and what Virginia Tech students?
Well, he's going to talk about it right now. We're going to talk about it right now. It's under other states. Chiefs?
Go ahead, chief.
I think it's going to be very short-winded tonight. I think we all know in our community that we've seen a spike in cases. We knew that we were going to see a spike in cases. You're bringing 30,000 people into our community. I've spoke to Dr. Bissell this afternoon. You know, her general statement is 95% of positive tests that we have incurred over the past week have been college students. She also makes a statement that we do not see, lack of better term, cross-contamination between students and our general population. We also are seeing that our positive rate is starting to go down for students. We knew that influx was going to cause us some issue, and I think we've weathered that. Kids going back to school today. Probably have to weather some storms there. But we're built for that and the task force is alive and well and working hard. So we'll continue to press forward and make good decisions that benefit our community.
They test in tomorrow at the Frog Pond on Cinema from 10 to 1.
Are you guys still meeting with the school board and, I imagine?
Is that the whole task force you mean, that we have the task force?
Yeah, the school is involved with our task force. They have a member on that committee every day.
I know, so they're still coming out to the meetings, you know?
The school has been very active. We're their great partners and they've worked hard to develop a really good plan to get our kids back in school. They've worked diligently.
As far as you know, today went pretty well?
As far as I know, I've not heard anything to the contrary.
Very good. Thank you. Billy, anything to add to that?
Good.
All right. Council reports, Mr. Stipes?
No report, Mary, thanks.
Mr. Showalter?
No report.
Mr. Hubbard?
Yes, I would like to just say a few words here. You know, last spring, we put together our budget, which was sort of a bare bones budget, just to see how our revenue would be affected during, during the summer and during right now. And I think in October, we're probably going to look over several things that we wanted to do last spring, but we, we just didn't feel confident that we'd have the revenue recovery. And I think that, well, that we're probably going to make a little presentation and say just how, an update on that. Now, along with that, I wanted to say something about the park. You know, this is a very difficult time. I want to mention, if we hold off on this, the $18 million that we are going to have to spend now with inflation, we wait three or four years, that 18 million is going to add up to 21 billion. And another thing I think that we should consider, right now, interest rates are as low as they're ever going to be. You cannot get them any lower than this. So we're just hoping that all of us on council could be thinking about this for the next couple of weeks, because I feel certain it will be bought up in, in October. Thank you.
Mr. Bishop? Sachs?
Yes. I did want to maybe see if Randy's willing to talk a little bit about this as well. But there's been a lot of citizens that have reached out to me concerning Rose Lawn Cemetery. And they're not happy there. So I've attempted to reach out to Stonemore Corporation, and Randy has stepped in as well. Do you mind giving a short update on the progress of that, so people watching know that progress is being made?
I spoke to Ross Cameron. He's with Stonemore Corporation. He's the new general manager of Rose Lawn Cemetery. He's been on board three weeks with them. And he said he, he does have focus on the park. He said that basically the tombstones are, or I guess the plaques are to the side for a variety of reasons, including maintenance and repair. Also, some people don't desire for them to be down if they're still living, though they've paid for the headstone. So they do have many in storage. He said that he was going to be on site this week, working through getting the ones down that need to be down. He's working on the mausoleum. He's going to have it, the gutters cleaned, have it pressure washed, have the ceiling tiles replaced and other maintenance done yet, and also focus on landscaping. And they've got a maintenance company hired for landscaping maintenance. They have two people spending time between this cemetery and another cemetery for Stonemore Corporation.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that. And that we're still going to continue to work with them and talk with them until we see some satisfactory results.
He gives me updates pretty regularly.
Yeah. Thank you.
I was in the cemetery last week, and Kevin, the fellow who runs the cemetery, he said there have been several people who have been transferred from Rose Lawn to Sunset. And I thought that was really surprising that they would do that.
Hey Randy, you mentioned the state commission that sure oversees these private cemeteries, because that's what Rose Lawn is. Marissa, has the people you've discussed this with, have they, had, I know Randy put out the contact information, but can this commission have any impact if he says that you can contact them?
Department of Occupational and Professional Regulation, basically a DEPOR. They, they do issue licenses for private cemeteries and they can, potentially with all their license, seize operations of cemetery, if that's their desire. Of course, they're going to try to correct any infractions first. But they are looking into it.
So they have gotten, yeah, they have gotten over 20.5.
Now, we had staff go out there, right?
Yes.
And was there any infractions for our?
Well, there are some, I guess, I'd say minor landscaping things. There's some barren spots of grass. There were some, spots of junk and debris. As I mentioned, there were some of the nameplates stored, stored basically behind the fence area. So, you know, like I say, I guess potentially barren, barren grass spots, although, you know, a few square foot might not necessarily be an erosion and sediment control violation. It might be a violation of the DEPOR regulations for cemeteries.
The concern that I had, Mr. Showalter, was had gravestones being driven over. And you could clearly see tire marks right over them, and they were busted. And to me, that's unacceptable. But I am aware of several people who made their complaint to DEPOR, including myself. And I did get a response, I shared with Randy, that they're going to look into it.
Yeah, D-4, I have contacted them as well, and I know a lot of the people that have been complaining on Facebook and everywhere else. I've spoken to them as well, and I heard that they have been getting phone calls from D-4 as well. And I know that some of their issues have already been corrected, so. But I know that D-4 is actually looking into it. So that's good news. And that you guys are looking into it, so that's phenomenal to hear.
And I would, Randy, I would just, who was the gentleman in charge now?
Ross Cameron.
I would just, if you can talk to him in the next week, say this is something that's, we always talk about back burner or front burners, but this is on the front burner. And I'm gonna tell you why. It's because Mr. Stipes mentioned it, and I'm gonna, I'm not gonna actually get a great quote out of it, Brad, I'm sure I'm gonna butcher it, but you said people make a, a quick assumption about a community based on how they treat those who have passed on. And you mentioned that years ago, and how important it is when the town took over Sunset that we do keep it off. And we do keep it off. We do a very good job of that. So this is gonna be something that you can hear from each one of, you hear from each one of us, that we're gonna be interested in them fulfilling their promises to those families who have members buried there. Okay? If you would just let me know that.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Hicks?
Hi, I just, I really have gotten some phone calls from people asking about our Facebook Live. They really enjoy being able to view it from Facebook. I don't know what is the difference between the YouTube thing. I guess, I don't know if it's the link sharing or is it that much delay? At least it's not here. But can you tell me why is it more difficult for people to get on and see the live streaming from Town Council now, that it was the other day from Facebook?
Do you know a particular person having a problem? Maybe have them contact either me or Marissa?
Okay. And then another one of the comments was, they are not able to put comments in there like they used to. And then something else was, I guess that's it. Thank you.
We do have a place for public comment on the council agenda, if people want to make comments.
Can you explain that to me? I don't.
The citizens hearing, if the people want to speak.
You mean, on, under the YouTube thing?
Well, if people want to make comments to council, they can do so during the citizens hearing.
Yeah, but those have not been able to be read during town council meetings, and they seem kind of like put on the pile with the rest of the emails. I don't, I don't see their voices being heard.
In the past, Randy, when we were having our FaceTime or whatever, people could actually go in and type comments at that moment. I think that's what should be corrected.
Yes, yes.
Do you see a need to continue that?
I personally think it's great for people to be informed.
Well, they, they can watch the video, and they can actually probably copy and paste the link to their personal Facebook page, make a comment, start a string there after the meeting. And I think it's important. I have no problem with it. I think on YouTube, it's going live. People are watching this right now. I think that's the point of going live with the council. I think YouTube's fine.
And I also support no comments, just for the reason of what I have read in the comment section. I wouldn't want kids to see that. So I support turning comments off, and if they can email us, they can come here. There's, there are other avenues other than being a keyboard warrior.
I'm fine with it.
It's not that I'm here every day, so I don't know if we're here at all meetings. All right. That is? Thank you. Another business? Ms. Sacks?
Yes. Excuse me. I move that Town Council enter into closed meeting as stipulated in the agenda for Code 2.2-3711A7, for the consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe it will be commenced by or against a known party. The closed meeting is for council discussion of town's involvement in pending litigation, Carols LLC and A&amp;V Real Estate LLC versus NRV Marketplace LLC. The second topic is a closed meeting under Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A1, for the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. The closed meeting is for council to discuss appointment of clerk of council. Can we get a poll?
That's, that's in form of motion.
It's in form of a motion. Need a second.
Second. Good motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Burke?
Yes, I have a discussion. If we are going to close session under item one, is the town also involved in that litigation?
That'd be the purpose of going into closed session, to discuss that, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Burke, is it? Madam Burke, just on both meetings?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Schellwalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That's six oh. And council has elected not to take any further actions on either one of the items? Now, is there anything else to come before council? We have none. You're adjourned. Thank you very much.